I don't know about the [inaudible 00:01:59] but it's six o'clock.
Let's go. Let's hit it.
Ron Arbrooester was here. He has an update on his plans, but he hasn't turned anything in, so there's nothing really for us to consider. I didn't know he was going to be here tonight, but we have time, I think, to let him be heard before the meeting. But we'll go ahead and start with the building code issues. As we discussed before, you know, we're on the 2003 Building Code, so there have been two code cycles since then. It is usual that cities and counties do not adopt every code change, but adopting, you know, the code change after two cycles is a pretty typical thing. We had a ISO insurance investigator here three years ago now who thought that didn't cite us so much, but has suggested that keeping up with the current codes is an essential element of preserving our good insurance rating. And this doesn't have anything to do with the fire club issue. It's just the... And so the mayor appointed a committee. The committee was an architect, Steve Bacon, who many of you know, a contractor, it was Tim Erzog, a citizen who has used the services of our building division, Randy Rizika, the mayor, me, Jimmy, and at the time Brenda.
And Ed Moore.
And Ed Moore. And we went through every... Jimmy was... had found a city, I guess, somebody who had tracked the changes in the code over the code cycles. So he was able to work with the committee, and we were able to consider the changes that were made, some of which the committee has recommended keeping, some of which they did not. And so the outcome of all of that, and we have Jimmy to thank for his hard work, is what's before you for discussion tonight. And I think we'll let Jimmy kind of go through the changes that are being proposed. He'll highlight the differences between what we have, what 2012 says, and then advise you as to the recommendation of the board on what amendments, local amendments, they would recommend for the 2012, so we don't end up adopting something that we regret later. It was a tedious task, took a lot of hours, but it's necessary in order to avoid just wholesale adopting a new code and then having to live with things you find in it later. So, Jimmy?
Okay. Let's start off on the second page, under section R, table R 301.2. And that's a little sex table that was in our book previously, but it's never been filled out. There it is on the bottom, John. But that section has never been actually filled out. What you have to do is go through the book and find your ground snow load, which is 20, wind design, which is 90, and then go back and fill the table out. And that's what we did. You could always find it, but you'd have to research it in all of the section, and then... But we actually filled the table out so that you would know what everything is. Like the frost line, it's 30 inches.
And that affects what?
When you go to do a footing, you've got to be 30 inches below ground.
Right. So that's why those numbers are important.
Right. And you want to explain this one on the flood hazards?
But isn't this pretty well common to all builders around town? They know this, don't they?
No.
They really don't?
No. No.
The flood hazard is a reference to the... FER means Federal Insurance Rate Map.
Right.
And that's a reference to the map that applies to St. Genevieve.
Most contractors, Rick, depend on the building department to guide them through all this stuff. They don't have... These books are probably... There's seven or eight books are probably $500, $600 per set. Most engineers have them on their computers.
I thought it was pretty well common, only since you go at least 30 inches.
Oh, yeah. Frost line.
Yeah. I thought that was pretty well common.
That's always been like an unofficial...
Even when I built my garage, I did that.
Yes.
And I'm not a contractor, and I knew how to do that.
Right. But when you go into footings and stuff, they always hear they pour them two foot wide, one foot thick, and it... That's what they've always done, but the code doesn't really require them to be that big.
Okay.
But that's just how they've been doing it for all the years.
All right. I'll be quick.
The third page is probably the most important stuff. Section R 313, Automatic Fire Sprinkler System. If you went to the 2012 code and you didn't take this out, and you were building a new house, it would have to be sprinkled. So the committee decided that's not what the city wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
But then the state gets involved. If you explain that.
Yeah. So the state basically, obviously acknowledged that not too many people were happy about this. So they passed a statute in 2013, basically saying, "Okay, you don't have to make them do it, but if you don't make builders do it, then you have to make them offer it and provide them information so that they can make a good decision." But so in order to be able to say that in our code, we had to adopt the state language, which is here, and I gave you a sheet that... Actually, some of the language got a little messed up. And then I've given you a brochure that the City of Crete Court hands out with that, and they have an application form that basically, when somebody comes in with their plans for a new building, they have to have the purchaser fill that out, so that the purchaser knows they can require the builder to put in a sprinkler system if they choose. They pay for it.
Yeah.
But they have to be given the option, and they have to be told, basically, what that means.
These residential sprinkler systems are not like commercial. It doesn't... They're basically PVC lines, low-pressure systems, so you don't have to have any special pressurization like you do in commercial. And I want to say, I don't want to suggest they're inexpensive, but it's not as expensive as you think when you think sprinkler system.
Yeah, as commercial. Yeah.
Also, I know that the City of Crete Court, they, in their brochure, and the application form, they actually give some facts about kind of sprinkler systems and how much you save during an average fire event by having sprinklers versus not, and, you know, just how deadly fires are, and that you should know that, you know, when a fire happens, only the sprinklers that are near the fire actually go off, not the whole system, which is what a lot of people are afraid of, you know, things like that. And I think that brochure provides that, and then if we do something similar to Crete Court, we could also provide that information, so that people, you know, have a reasonable understanding of what a fire sprinkler system is.
This state statute resulted, was a result of a huge battle between the Fire Marshals Association of Missouri and the Home Builders Association of Missouri. And that language was the compromise that came out of that battle.
And this little form you have to fill out, that goes all the way... Let's say you're getting ready to build a house, and Martin was my builder. He can offer that to me at the time we sign the deal, and before we actually close, we have to go back and... He's built a spec house, right? If you build a spec house, he can have it built, but he still has to offer the sprinkler system to me before he sells it to me.
Right. Okay. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
See anything wrong with that at all?
And then the other thing they did, the state required us to put back in the code 2006, two-family and townhouse dwellings, which basically you do 5/8 rated drywall from floor to ceiling, and that keeps your fire rating without having to be sprinkled.
So that, all that language there is, basically, if we're not adopting the 2012 code, we have to put that in. So that's what that's all relating to. That's why it's specific, and all the other sections just refer to the code. These are very specific provisions that we're putting in.
Okay. The next section that we actually amended...
Are you looking for one?
Yep. Yeah, the international property.
Property maintenance.
We don't have... Sorry, we don't have... It's the next to last page. It's the International Property Maintenance Code.
Letter F?
Well, it starts in section D, right under Board of Appeals. Section 602.3.
H. There.
Where are we? Section here.
My H is International Fuel Gas Code?
No.
No.
It's the International Property Maintenance Code.
That's the last one.
Right.
And the F?
Right. It's a big F. It's a capital F.
111.
Capital L.
Yeah.
Little d.
This one.
That one. Yeah. It says tenant spaces.
Okay. Big F, little d.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Sorry. The tenant spaces, that was another little section that was always in the code, but we never had dates. So when we go to inspect, this tells you when you've got to have heat on, and it'll tell you what the temperatures have to be. We've inserted October 1st to April 12th, April 1st for heat. Section 605.2, that's what we've always had in the code as far as GFCIs. The same with section 603.7 for mechanical equipment. Section 8 was just added. We've added carbon monoxide alarms. An approved carbon monoxide alarm should be installed outside of each separate sleeping area in the immediate vicinity of the bedrooms and dwelling units in which fuel-fired appliances are installed, and in dwelling units that have attached garages. Now, that doesn't mean one in ever... Outside of ever bedroom, ever sleeping area. So if you've got three bedrooms, you have to...
Over into a common hall.
Right.
Only need one detector.
Right.
But if you have a master on one end of the house and a set of bedrooms on the other, you need two.
Right. And if you've got sleeping rooms in the basement, you'd have to have another one there. And the next page on B. We took arc fault interruption protection completely out of the code, because we've done a lot of research. They don't work right all the time. CAPE has eliminated them almost every area around here, just taking arc faults out.
Can you explain that a little bit?
An arc fault, start out in the bedroom. You have to have an arc fault protection in each bedroom.
Explain what an arc fault interruption is.
They're only in bedrooms. If you're plugging a lamp in and you get a spark, because the lamp's already turned on, that's called an arc fault. Somebody decided we need protection, so they... The only way to get them was breakers, which are like $50 apiece. We did the apartments out there. They've got them, and they will check one day and everything's fine, the next day, half of them don't work, so everybody just started. Now, they had to leave theirs in, but we're taking them out of the 12 code.
Is there real danger?
There's no danger. It's just... They just... They don't work right all the time, so they're not like a smoke detector that works right.
False safety there.
Yes. And even... We've got a little tester that I went and paid like $60 for, and all of the ones that we did, the apartments at John's house, they don't really work. You've got to actually... To see if they work, you shut them off. Well, if you shut them off, sure, they're not going to... You know what I'm saying? So... And that's mainly it.
It really tracks the changes that have, you know, the previous ordinance where the 2003 code had been adopted follows very similar format, and many of the same things have been either added or deleted, so...
And most of your residential stuff, this will... That's kind of just like the local stuff. The international stuff, that does... Because that's all commercial, that doesn't change hardly. We went through every one of them, though, and that's the only changes we have.
So if I'm the builder, I've been building St. Genevieve for a while. I'm not going to notice any marked difference in what I have to do, except these three or four things that you created here.
Yes. Well, the stuff in the International Property Code, that's all in the new codes, but so you can only enforce...
Yeah. The builder will have carbon monoxide detectors and stuff.
Yes, that's it, basically.
What you put here has to do with change of occupancy on existing structures.
Correct.
Relative to the carbon monoxide issue.
Correct. Now, if a builder's building a new house, he's got to put the carbon monoxide detectors, just like it says here in the code.
Right. The combined.
Right.
But for... Again, for the builder, the major difference here is, basically, I've got to offer the people an opportunity to have a sprinkler system.
That's correct.
Either accept it or decline it.
That's correct.
And when they apply for their building permit, we'll want to see the evidence that they declined it before we issued a building permit, or we'll expect to see it in there.
Now, this is... This is a 2003, this is a 12. And all they've done, they added a bunch of chapters in the book, like swimming pools and this and that. And we didn't accept... Remember, Mayor, we didn't accept any of their appendixes in the back. You don't have to, because we already have a swimming pool section in here already, so... And there's a section in our own daycare. We just didn't want to get involved in all that stuff, because that's controlled by the state. Builders shouldn't see any big changes.
Sounds good, Jimmy. Thank you, buddy.
Well, it took a lot of people. Martin and everybody else. It wasn't just me. Brenda spent a lot of time... Brenda's the one that got this for us. Sent out emails, and this came from a guy in Arizona, because nobody... There's not a book that says from 3 to 6 you do this, from 6 to 9 you do that, from 9 to 12. And somebody spent a lot of time putting this together, so...
Saved a lot of...
Saved a lot of time.
Good. All right. Yes, sir. Ever... There's nobody exempt from this inspection, correct?
Correct.
You mean...
Or should be. But county still has to...
Well, that's... I'm talking about citywide. You're talking private citizens.
Right.
No. The county has a belief that they may not be subject to our codes. We disagree. There's a court case that contradicts that.
Not our court case, probably.
Wait, you're talking about Wentzville?
Warren.
Warren.
But no, I mean, every citizen should apply and get permits. Ron?
This is a general question, but it's something that applies to a lot of projects. Does your code provide for submitting in parts? In other words, if I want to do a fast-track construction project, can I submit footings and foundations for approval, plumbing for approval, and then come back in with the rest of it?
Yeah, but the code doesn't address that, but we typically cooperate with builders in that regard, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we would only need to know what the structure was going to be. That's actually come up recently, and what the structure's going to be for purposes of the footings.
We'll be doing... I mean, the design professional, obviously, has to know what the structure is, because he's got to design footings and foundations.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
But if you turn in a grading plan, we would approve your grading plan. You turn in footings and foundations, we would approve that pending the receipt of... But that's about it. Then the next... The next submitted needs to be the full set of plans.
Ron, we did that on the apartments, the new apartments out on front of the Parkway. And that's what we... We issued a footing and foundation, so that they could get started, and then they finished the design on the upper...
What about rough plumbing then?
Same thing.
You can do rough plumbing?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we will prepare an ordinance for the adoption of the 2012 International Building Code with local amendments.
Sounds good.
The other item that I wanted to raise in the work session is that the ladder truck we've made a decision on, it's just kind of in the way now. So in order to dispose of it, however we best can get... We need to declare it surplus property. Before I put that declaration on an agenda, I thought I'd just bring it up and see if there's any... Anybody wants to contribute.
There's just no way possibly to get that thing going where we could use it anymore. It's just that obsolete.
I don't think that's what we concluded.
We didn't conclude that.
If you spend enough money, you can get it back in service.
How much is enough money?
Well, you don't know exactly, but I think what we're getting, 80, 60, 80,000? What'd you find?
Something between 30 and...
Although 80 was for the used truck, I suppose.
Yeah. 30 and... Okay. The one quarter to half is 30, right? Thought it could go to 50.
Yes. That's what I thought. I think it said between 30 and 50. Yeah. It's funny who did it. Oh, what's wrong with it?
The idea was, the thought was, that you could buy a 10-year newer truck for 75 or 80, so...
Can we?
Uh, we found some. We found some.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
We, you know, obviously, we're just a magazine. We don't know what shape the name been either, but I think the one said that it was, I don't know if it was certified or not, that it passed, but...
Of course, I mean, we don't have the 80 either, so it's...
We can come up with the 80.
Okay. I'll put this truck on an agenda for declaration of surplus property. Mr. Arbrooester is here. We didn't have... We have other business on the agenda, so he's going to, I guess, update you on his progress relative to the microtale under any other business.
First of all, Mr. Scrackman intended to come, but at this last minute, wasn't able to make it. So I'll bring you up to date as to where we are. Based on the response that we had at the last council meeting, and I was out of town for several weeks, we've dropped back and looked at this in a different way. First of all, we have eliminated any parking lot overlay at Alderman Hook's request. And secondly, what we're looking at now is going ahead and building 12 new units to fulfill the concerns of several other aldermen. How we are looking at approaching this project is this way. Our original concept was to do the first phase, and then later on be in a position to add 16 units to the back of the motel. Now, what we're proposing is we have the vacant lot behind Huddle House and the therapy building. And what we're proposing is to go in there and do 12 units slab-on-grade as opposed to two-story addition on the back. Now, there are a number of advantages to doing that. First of all, by cutting the number of units down from 16 to 12, obviously, that will be less money we'll have to borrow. Secondly, by building them slab-on-grade, we feel we can build the units at a reduced cost. Thirdly, by doing it as a separate project, we will avoid business interruption in our existing building while we're adding on, because this lot's set separately. In addition to that, we can fast-track the project, and that's why I was asking you about the phased construction here, because if we proceed on this, we want to go much faster rather than slower. So with that, I also want you to know, we went back and did some analysis on sellouts. And since 2012, going through all of '12, '13, and up to date in '14, the first 10 months, we went back and looked at how many times would we have used the extra rooms? And that is the risk-reward here. Can we utilize the extra rooms enough time to pay the taxes, insurance, and principal and interest payment? In those last three years, or nearly three years, sorry, two months here, if you look at a sellout as 46 of our 48 rooms, 46, 47, 48, I didn't use 48, because we might have had a reservation, somebody canceled, which cuts it to 47, or maybe we had two cancellations. And the reason I'm bringing this out is, is that I have a proposal here, but it's still going to be subject to a loan, and we still have to get finer numbers on seeing what our cost is going to be. But if you take the first three months of 2012, '13, and '14, January, February, March, and you take December of '12 and '13, obviously, we haven't had it yet this year, of those 11 months, and again, this is using 46, 47, and 48 as a sellout, in those 11 months, there will have only been 11 occasions that we were sold out. So nearly one-third of the year, we would have only used the extra rooms 11 times, okay? And the odds are, based on history here, the chances of a selling out in November and December are pretty thin. So where I'm coming from, the risk-reward in doing this, our approach to this project's going to be this. We're willing to move forward. We've had some preliminary numbers put together here, but what we're looking for is, if you all are going to consider doing this, then we will move forward on the loan process and more detailed engineering. The last time we started this, we actually had to go for, do a leg-out, and he could get his numbers down pretty close. This time, we've had some phone conversations, and Cleat was going to pick up these numbers and bring them down. I'll pass them out here in just a second. But again, the idea is, is that if we can get the TIF commitment and get a loan commitment, we will want to start footings, foundations, start the process immediately, try to get that in this winter, and get the slab hopefully poured, and then spring, go up with the construction with the idea of having it done by July, which is pretty fast-tracked, but if anybody was around when we built the other one, we... It's pretty much the schedule we followed on that. Okay? So the other thing I'll point out here, too, is that there was comments about the fact that if we'd have done the other project as we proposed, we weren't going to create any increment. So obviously, building a 12-unit facility, and it'll have more than 12 units in it, because we'll have to have laundry and some other issues there, too. because we'll have to have laundry and some other issues there too. We will be building another building that will go on the tax books, and hopefully, it will generate additional sales, which will generate additional sales tax and advertising tax for the tourism budget. Employment-wise, the days it's sold out, we will have another person because it usually takes a housekeeper for every ten units, but would have create a large number of jobs? No, it won't. Another thing that we discovered as we start to look at this, one of our approaches on this is if we can build the annex, or whatever we want to call it, the twelve units over there, what we'll probably do then, or unquestionably we'll do it, we will move all of our smoking rooms over there and make our other facility totally smoke-free, which is, if you ever follow our TripAdvisor evaluations, smoking is the criticism that, that we get for our building, and it's a catch-22 because we have many regular construction companies that stay with us whose guys are regular smokers. So, if we can put the annex together with twelve units, we will move the smoking over there and then go totally free with our, our main facility, okay? The other thing that we'll be able to do on this, because it's on a separate lot and it's not attached to our main building, we will build it to Wyndham standards, but we won't have to go through probably a four-to-six-month evaluation on getting them to approve it because we're basically just going to go ahead and start building it. Since it's on a different property, we won't have to follow their architectural approvals. So with that, I'm going to pass out some numbers that Danny Gofro put together. And I can't, and I know he can't either, and he's had one of these numbers because the best we have to go by is just some guesstimates because we don't know what it's going to take to bring the water to the site and, and get, get to the billing for sprinkling. We don't know what it's going to take to get the sewer to the site. So Danny put together some best estimates. One that did seem to me, and I think Danny forgot about our stormwater detention basin, he's got stormwater in there at sixteen-five, and I, I don't believe that that will be adequate. Under the architectural fee, I did not have time to sit down with Julie. Of course, she just had her baby, and I've been traveling a lot. So, we reduced the architectural fee down to twenty-five thousand. I think that's probably more than adequate on, on what we're planning to do here. But again, I don't know what the, the real numbers are going to be, and I know there are very limited things that will qualify for this, but that's where we are today. We would anticipate, based on Microtel projections, that we'll be spending north of forty thousand a unit for the twelve units. We will probably be our own general contractors on it to save money. That's what we did on the, the main property. Again, we would like to do a fast-track where if we get the TIF approval, we'll start the loan application. And we would like to be breaking ground and putting footings and foundations in, weather permitting, as soon as possible. Again, again, we won't move forward on the project unless we can get a loan. And with that, a reasonable expectation that this project will come close to paying taxes, insurance, principal, and interest.
Concrete is pretty general. What all would that include?
It will be parking lot sidewalks and the main slab of the building.
Would the other, is, is this in place of the other proposal, or would that be part of?
We've, we've eliminated, we're probably going to eliminate most of the other proposal, most of the things in the other proposal, and focus on getting the twelve units.
Do you still want to do the parking lot in the back?
I, I don't, it's going to depend upon how much money we borrow. I mean, we, we plan to apply to the state for some tertiary low-interest loan money, but the project's going to have to amortize twenty years' taxes, insurance, principal, and interest. We'll absorb utilities and we'll absorb, I mean, risk that, but we're going to have to have a reasonable, reasonable feeling that it'll at least carry principal, interest, taxes, and insurance.
So do you have an idea of, of what a real TIF number would be?
Well, this is the number that Danny put together on what we felt would qualify. I don't know if these areas are higher or lower deck. So what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, this would be a maximum number. Obviously, there's only certain things qualify. I, I, I would say that, you know, in our situation, we appreciate whatever you all are willing to do, and whatever you're willing to do along with what we borrow, will determine whether we can do the project. And, and just, I mentioned the worst four months out of the year, honestly. I wish we could cut all of our expenses off and mothball it. But in all fairness, in 2012, using that same parameter of forty-six to forty-eight is a sellout night, in 2012, we would have had forty sellouts, in 2013, forty-four, and year-to-date this year, only twenty-two. So if you say forty is the magic number of sellouts, you build twelve rooms. If you rent ten, ten rooms, times forty is four hundred root nights at sixty, sixty-five dollars a night. You're talking twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. Is that going to cover principal, interest, taxes, and insurance? It all depends upon what the interest rate is and how much money we borrow. And how much money we borrow will be determined upon how much TIF money we get and how much we can squeeze the costs down on the project.
Ron?
Yes.
When you go to additional rooms, will there also be additional employees?
I think I mentioned, when we're sold out, it's probably Joe probably knows this number, but I believe generally it's ten to twelve rooms per housekeeper, okay? So if we sell out forty-four nights out of the year, an extra ten rooms, forty-four nights out of the year, we'll have another full-time employee. Okay. Now, that being said, we'll probably also have to have a little help at the front desk, and we'll probably, whatever. I, I will also point out, and I, I don't have any of the other stuff that we brought in before, but it was pointed, brought up to me later on that our project, when you talk in terms of sales tax, property tax, tourism tax, those are the direct taxes, but probably our clientele, more than any other business, would, would obviously go to other places and do other things in town where there's restaurants, or vineyards, or wineries, or shopping, or whatever. So probably, you know, if you look at what the tourism spends, our, our clientele probably tends to, or our project probably tends to bring in more taxes than some of the others. And there was discussion about adding increment, and of course, this building will add increment. And, and the twelve rooms will probably just about replace what the hotel, a lot of bond property down here eliminated. So, I think I've hit everything on my list.
If the, the main slab would be the foundation for the new building, correct?
Yes.
That's not considered part of the vertical construction?
I don't believe so, according to the law. I can tell you that would, we would have to have that verified. It's my understanding. It's not, if, if it is, I can tell you if it isn't, if it isn't TIF-eligible, then we probably won't be able to borrow another fifty thousand dollars. But I need a clarification on what is eligible.
We'll get that answer for sure, and then I guess, do we need to get, do we, do you want to refine these, or?
There really is no way to refine it at this point unless I hire Gofro to go down, locate the sewer and the water, and, and do all those things.
If we're going to do it, it's kind of a reimbursable. It's obviously best to err on the high side, and then we'll reimburse whatever it ends up being.
Well, and I would assume that we could do that through verification with the building inspector.
Or you just turn it in, you hire somebody to do the concrete work, and you turn in the invoice. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want to use the bathroom?
No. A few minutes here, at our last meeting, John brought up the Third Street handrail over the creek, and Dave's here early. So maybe we'll take advantage of Dave's presence here and just have a conversation.
Third Street handrail. A few minutes ago, I brought that up and asked you what you wanted me to do with that, and so that's why we put them concrete barriers there. Haven't found a safe way yet to tear the old one out, because every time we wanted to, the creek was up a little bit. I don't think it'd be right to have guys on a ladder down there, and we don't want them hanging over there trying to saw it off, so... But I asked you guys what you wanted to do with that, and basically you said, put the concrete barriers there.
Well, have you done any evaluation of the cost for replacing it?
Well, I, when I brought that up to the board, I, I asked, you know, if we did it, you know, and it doesn't hold up, I mean, we don't have the, you know, the tools or the capability of securing that, you know. Where logs and everything going through, it's going, it's going to hold up to that. So, I mean, and we, then it was brought up that, you know, we wanted to see what was going to happen with that bridge before we spent any money on it.
Yeah, I think we're still in that position, but in the meantime, maybe we could get somebody to evaluate it and see what kind of order of magnitude we're talking about.
You see, you're saying you need something like a guardrail type of thing, like something on the other side, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a guardrail in front of there, but, and that's the only thing that really saved it to, you know, but as high as that water was, you know, all the pressure from all the trees and everything going through there just tore it up. It's been tearing it up. We've just been kind of doctoring it, so...
David, are you looking about maybe a galvanized rail going through? You know what I'm talking about, the ones that they use along the highway department, something like that, or?
I don't...
Is that a little bit overkill?
I really don't, I don't think it's overkill, but I really don't think anything's going to hold up to there. I mean, because you're, you're putting it in an eight-inch thick sidewalk. It's, it's not much of a, a foundation to be bowling it to.
So if anything, we have to go down and drill through the sidewalk and put it down into something, right?
Well, like I said, all the pressure from all the, you know, the debris coming down the creek, what's going to hold? I mean, I would suggest that we have an engineer look at that, you know. I mean, we can put anything we want there, but is it going to hold? And then are we liable, you know?
Yeah, that'd be a difficult thing even for an engineer to calculate what the load is when the logs start coming down the creek.
David, how long has this other one held up than one that's there now, except for the...
It's been about ten years.
And did we put that in?
Yeah.
We did? Are we ten years out of?
Yeah.
Do you remember what the cost of that was, approximately? Probably not, okay.
No, it's been, I mean, we can, we can do it for a few hundred dollars, but, I mean, I just wanted to know where we stand, or if something happens and somebody does lean on that wood fall, you know, since we did it, you know?
Well, if we, we did it ten years ago and lasted ten years, I don't know.
The lugs have got to be secure to taking it clean down.
Right.
Them lugs wouldn't have been secured.
So I don't see people going to do it again. That's my opinion.
Is it like a dent on your house where the spindles have to be so far apart, or anything like that, for new construction?
Well, I'd have to look, look at that or ask these guys that, because, you know, I think when that was built, it was just... But I know the rail was too low.
Yeah, it was too low.
It wasn't forty-two, thirty-six, forty inches.
It's a certain height, and it needs to be able to withstand two hundred pounds of pressure to be fall protection. But other than that, I don't know.
But I can check in on that. My next meet, I'll have you apprise, so...
A few hundred dollars, ten years.
Yeah, I think that's a good trade-off.
You guys obviously did a good job the first time you did it, lasted that long.
I think we were lucky.
Don't say that.
I'm saying we get engineering involved, and like Martin says, you know, he's probably not going to sign up in it anyway because you didn't know, you know, what pressure's coming through there.
Yeah, you don't know what's coming down the screen?
Yeah.
Of course, then again, you've got to remember, that flood, that was the one that flooded, the other one didn't. So, I mean, that's the first time in my lifetime I've ever seen that happen.
Don't you think Beth just go back and do it again?
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah, we'll maybe even up the materials.
What else can you do? I mean...
I mean, it could be much yet before we find out.
I mean, can I say something?
What we're going to end up doing in time.
Floor is open.
Okay, where are we going with the property on Fourth Street, the burned-down house?
The game for twenty days, that twenty days is up. We reviewed the file, consulted with the city attorney, and, and looked at some other examples of similar situations where cities intervened and were either successful or not successful. And, and the city attorney's advice is consistent with what we discovered. That is, that we need to do a more detailed evaluation of the damage inside the structure than what we did when we declared a dangerous building. And that's going to require access. We'll ask the people for permission, but absent that, we need to get the judge to give us basically a search warrant and go in and itemize the issues before we can determine that either it will prepare or will not prepare.
So what have the owners of this property, have they responded whatsoever?
They have not responded.
I would, I would say though, that they have a friend, Dave Steiger, who lives in town, who has been actually trying to clean up things. I noticed as I drove by tonight that he's actually replaced some of the broken windows and boarded up some of the openings because one of the complaints was that it's not secure, and that animals can get in and vagr, you know, whoever, kids, whatever, get in there. So there is somebody that's been trying to do some work to it. We've reached out to him to ask him if he can have the owners contact us and let's work on a solution, but they've been just non-responsive.
I thought we decided that we were going to probably start putting a fine per day if they didn't start doing something. Did we make that decision in the meeting?
I don't, it was fine.
I think there was a declaration of a level of nuisance and, and a direction to need a, issue an order of abatement, which we have done.
Yeah, the fine requires prosecution in municipal court.
Okay.
We're, we're well downstream with the work that's been done to go ahead and notify them that we're going to abate it or, or demolish.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to get a contractor and maybe an engineer on-site to say, these are the things that need to be done.
I don't... I don't think we want to be in a position to revitalize.
No, no, I don't either.
And we're either, we're either going to, it's either going to get fixed or we're going to take it down.
Right.
I'm concerned about, if we go to, if somebody calls us for an inspection and we go, and we fail it, say, electrical inspection, and they say, okay, well, tell me what it is I have to do in order to make this comply with the code. We, we don't do that. I mean, we can give them the reasons for the, for the, for the failure, but we can't design the electrical system for them. Now, if we kind of translate that to this, we can identify all the things that we think make this building a dangerous building. We can't prescribe a solution.
Well, I think what the board will do is, is decide whether you want to make it safe or simply look at it and say, it's more cost-effective to demolish it and elevate the nuisance.
I thought we were going to fine them. What happened to that remedy that night there?
What I was telling you is that you don't get the fine administratively. You, a fine would come out of a prosecution through Judge Hill's camp.
We would issue them tickets.
Yeah.
And, and then, and then we would prosecute the tickets, but...
And we can still, we can still issue tickets on a daily basis. But right now, we're, we're in the process of you folks issued a notice of abatement, and we're, we're ready to move to the next step and get something done immediately. There are times when we prosecute in municipal court where people just ignore us.
We're being ignored in this case.
So I mean, you know, you can say that there's a fine... So, I mean, you know, you can say that there's a fine, but it's really not effective in terms of serving the public sometimes. The public wants you to get some action.
So, we, so we find these two people that supposedly are the owner, okay, which they say they're not the owners, okay? So, who are we finding? You know, they, they keep saying this, you know, there's no will, no, nothing there, it's not ours, you know, so who, who are we gonna find?
Well, what you could do is you could start with, if you needed to prove who the owner, owner is, you could get a letter report out of Dave Weber, and he would basically say it would be the heirs of...
We have it.
We have it.
I thought we had done that.
Yeah. So, those heirs are collectively the owners of the property. Now, you've still gotta serve them, you've still gotta, are they, are they in state or out of state?
They're out of state. We, we already published notice in the paper about that.
And, and we tried, I mean, we haven't physically served them. Now, you have advised us that if we send certified and regular and they pick up the certified, you would consider that property service.
And we have that.
Have they picked up the certified letter?
Yes.
Or, they have?
And they have signed it.
Okay.
Well, the, the sis, the, the female daughter, the daughter signed it.
But, but not the son?
Not the son.
Or the half?
But we only sent it to the daughter. I don't think we have an address for the son.
We don't, we only have her address.
And a, a judgment in, in a Missouri municipal court judgment is not enforceable in Florida. If they choose not to come to Missouri, we'll, we'll, we'll never collect it. I think sometimes what you do is you look at your different options and just try to pick the one that's gonna work best in this particular case. There is no cookie cutter way to approach these things if people won't talk to you. But I don't know, I mean, I, we, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to staff, and it wouldn't hurt us to go ahead and...
I, I have an interested partner that thinks he can save this building and own it, his little robbery. And I put him in contact with her, and she never returned the call. He called me back and said, you know, I got these strange messages, and, and is it this person trying to contact us? I said, I don't know, you know, I'm not involved. But what if we offered, assuming that he, we can kinda do this simultaneously, what if we said, look, we're getting ready to do some pretty bad things to this property? Why don't you just deed it to us? And then we can enter into a contract with the guy who wants to work on it and, and then get it taken care of.
Yeah, are they gonna respond to that?
I don't know. I, 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 she, she's relatively young, unemployed, single mother, you know, she doesn't, the, the issues about which I speak to her are lost on her, she just doesn't get it. I think she's, I kinda think maybe they might be at a point where they're just saying, you know, get, get us out of this. Just give us a way out, because they really don't know what to do.
Well, maybe that's what they'll respond to, then.
Yeah.
What do you go to circuit court with, equipment?
There's, there's no, no significant difference in, in terms of going to circuit court or municipal court. It's, the municipal court's a division of the circuit court, and it's, it's still not enforceable outside the state. If they stay out of the state, they're never gonna collect your, your fines. We have gone to circuit court to get an order that allows us to order the property owner to abate the nuisance, but that still requires personal service, so somebody's gonna have to go to Florida and serve these papers.
I'll do that. We tried to get the sheriff to serve it, but they wouldn't serve anything but circuit court papers.
I think under our abatement ordinance, we don't have to personally serve them. I think if we provide notice, I mean, right.
So, the abatement track is the, you know, we've got traction on that, we can, we can pursue that.
All right, so I think we'll send a certified letter tomorrow that says, here's what's gonna happen, and make an offer to acquire it for nothing, for a dollar or whatever, and see what happens, and then, absent that, if we don't get the response or whatever, then we'll get somebody, come to Judge Hules camp and ask him to give us permission to enter. And we'll get, we'll get a qualified contractor in there with us and evaluate it, and we'll prepare a report and come back to you with the report, and we can do whatever the final step is.
Okay, the next thing, do you wanna update the board on the thing with Mr. Gek about tearing down the property on Merchant Street?
I have heard from him, you apparently have, so you should do that.
All right, he just didn't seem real happy in the wording in the contract on what to do. He said he was kinda, he just kinda wanted to walk away from it, because he was not real happy with some of the wording and what he was supposed to do. He said he had real concern about that. I had met with him, and I said, whatever the problem is, I said, I think we can take care of it. I said, we can strike some things out of the contract if it's not real important, and we can take care of that portion of it. And I met with Martin also, and Martin told me the same thing. He said, you know, if he's not real happy with something, we can probably just get it out of there.
I don't know what it is, but...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, I can't really protect the city with a document that says, please tear down our, this property. He's gotta follow safe standards, he's gotta have insurance.
Oh, I'm sure he has all that, but...
Well, what, yeah, but one of the things that you brought up is there are people who are interested in salvaging some of the materials, and, and, and restoration folks have told me that we ought to cooperate in having that happen, because it's, it's stuff you can't make again. Well, he's saying, if I do that, you know, this makes me responsible for their actions on this property. Kinda what he said.
You might need a contract with those folks.
Well, see, now, this is not gonna work. I said, this is not gonna work. I wouldn't walk in on with that if, if I was saying I would do that.
I'm sorry.
I, I, I wouldn't...
If he's gonna have volunteers coming on the property...
But I don't think he wants volunteers coming in. I think what, what Martin's saying is that people want some of this stuff, and I'm not too sure that he wants them coming in there. That's, that's the point I'm getting at, right?
Well, I don't know, I thought he was cooperating.
Oh, he was, okay, well, maybe not.
Well, that affects the way he's gonna tear it down, too. If he's gonna just knock it down, he doesn't have to worry about nothing, but if he's gonna salvage it...
You can't just take a wrecking ball to it if he's gonna salvage it, yeah.
So, that's costly.
Well, I kinda visualize that he would bring a backhoe in there and, and just, he would.
Well, that's what I thought, too. That was saying, we might...
What we were thinking.
Couldn't they take the salvaged materials out first?
Well, that's what these people are saying, let us get on it and get what we can get.
Well, that's up to him, do whatever you want. Maybe he can say no.
Well, what if, before he took possession?
Right, before he took possession, can we say, go in there and do that, because it's, it's our property right now? So, we, can we go in there and say, you know, is it...
Well, we would probably do something like we do on the flood properties and make whoever's coming on to remove, sign off saying that they're, you know, that they're on their own, that they're not gonna sue us if the building falls on them or whatever.
If we're gonna do that, let's do that, then, okay?
Well, do we have people asking?
Yes.
Okay?
As long as...
Can we approach Mr. Gek with that and see if that is a problem?
If that's what his problem is, that may not even be worth...
No, that's one of the problems.
And then unless he specifically wants something that somebody else wants, then that's probably...
Or he wants income for selling the, selling, I don't know.
Well, I, I would say he should have the first shot at all the salvaged material, because that was the deal, is basically, he was gonna level it, remove all the debris and the, and materials, and it would be basically a bare lot. Now, if, if we have other citizens who want pieces of that, I don't know that we have to let them, but if we can accommodate them, that's fine, but I think he should have first shot at it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
It should all go through here.
There are salvagers that are out there that would pay you...
But if it's an issue with him having responsibility, maybe we do it before he takes possession of it, and have them sign a waiver...
I can't imagine Harry going down there and trying to salvage any material. I don't think he would do that.
He, he would, but it's, so let's, let's ask him, and if he don't have a problem of us taking that step before he takes possession of it, then we can accommodate everybody, and that issue goes away.
Okay, good, all right. So, we need to meet with him?
I'm prepared to meet.
Okay.
And if Harry, if Harry does want...
I've been asking for meeting.
And the city is willing to donate it to historic preservation, we don't need to make money off of that.
No.
No.
I wanna get it down. If we can't work out something with him, I've been kinda thinking about, you know, our, our, our options, and, you know, I, we, I think...
Do we have another option?
No, but...
What are you thinking about these options for if we don't have one?
They're more expensive. Okay.
Thanks, sir, we gotta get that done.
I'm sorry. Oh, you mean this?
No, I mean, thank you, we gotta get that house done.
We do, yeah, we do.
I thought we had it.
This is dragging on too long.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jimmy.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jimmy, thanks, buddy.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jimmy, I thought Bob Bynell works...
Congratulations, sir, by the United States of America, and the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to roll call, I've been asked to just have a moment of silence for our former mayor, Urban Wyler's wife, Doris, passed away today, done? Passed away today, so we can just take a moment. Okay, thank you. Roll call, Pam?
Mayor Grimminger.
Here.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch. Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers. Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Present.
Alderman Tub.
I'm here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. Approval agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Martin, I guess, what do you?
Okay. After our last meeting, we asked representatives of the Church Finance Committee to meet with us to discuss the issues that were raised, and we did that on the Parkwood Trail property. Since it has to do with negotiating for the acquisition of real estate, I'd like to have a short closed session at the end of regular business to discuss the content of that meeting. I was at the Levy District meeting, you've probably read the paper, where Felix Meyer has resigned during effect in January first as the maintenance person for the Levy District on the Leveon pump station. He kind of expressed that he's kinda ready to slow down, though he would still be willing to provide his services on the operation of the pump station and kind of the technical aspect of, of the Levy. One of the Levy District, I guess, trustees, said, said to, wouldn't it make sense that the city employed this person and, and I wasn't sure, and then the Levy District entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the city, and, and it's time, you know, it wasn't something I responded to. But we, we have an opening, a part-time opening, and the park's, working, a worker in the park. We have trouble hiring somebody who wants to work that limited number of hours for what we pay them, so the turnover since John Pico left has been pretty high. The, and so it raised the possibility, and this is just for discussion, of maybe doing that, hiring somebody full-time rather than part-time, which allows you to get more qualified, interested candidates, and have more part-time as a park and part-time maintenance on the Levy. They'd be doing the same work, it's cutting the grass, it's, you know, sometimes hauling rock, and then Felix would take care of the operations of the pump station and the things that require some technical knowledge and background under a contract at Levy District. Levy District would then reimburse us for half the time of the, of the person that we, that we hired full-time. So, I haven't had any conversations with the Levy District trustees about this, other than that, we'll mention of it at the meeting, and, you know, is that something worth considering?
Yeah, I think so.
They would be willing to pay half their insurance and everything else?
Well, I think we have to negotiate what the, what the difference is. I mean, we, you know, we just have to come up with a number.
Can we work with a thing where if we need them, they're going to be there, or...
The Levy District maintenance, you know, is not time-sensitive generally, you know, and if, and like, there's kind of an emergency, so, yeah, I think we could work that in. I mean, they, you know, they have to cut grass, the same time we have to cut grass, so, uh, it, but if you don't, if you cut the grass tomorrow instead of today, you know, it's not quite a big a deal, but, yeah, I think we could work out a, a minimal working relationship. And that would allow Dave the opportunity of finding somebody a little more committed to the, to the job and a little more qualified than the kids you get for part-time work.
I think it's a good idea. I think you should pursue that.
Okay, I will, thank you. Petrie and I have been meeting with CMO Regional Planning, you know, they have a GIS system that is not the most sophisticated thing in the world, but they have capabilities, and we have information management issues. Lots of things that have been done over the years, and there's a file on them, and some of it's over here and some of it's over there, so Petrie was trying to get all this into one place where it's manageable, and you can go to a piece of property on the GIS system, you click on it, and it says, additional use per, special use permit was issued on such and such a date for this use, and that information is then available to anybody who wants to look at it. So, we're talking to them about how they can modify their system to fit our needs. It's gonna be relatively inexpensive and relative to doing yourself, so I will keep you informed as we, as we go down that road. Mayor and I, we're at the MML, M, M, M municipal league meeting in St. Charles, and we visited a booth of an organization called the MOSA, it's the Missouri Securities Investment Program. And, and what it is, there are, it was an organization of school districts originally, who were frustrated at the ability to not get significant earnings on the money they had invested, as we are. S-SU, every time a CD comes up, she calls around trying to find the best place to put our CDs, and we get point oh-three-one interest, you know? It's, it's, it's like, it's like nothing. This system is, was, again, designed originally for school districts to maximize returns, you know, they invest in government securities, and, you know, there's, there's some downside risk, but almost none. They didn't lose, as an example, in 2008, they didn't lose a penny. On the other hand, you know, you're not getting 10% returns, but you're, you're getting in the four range show over a long period of time, and they've got, you know, St. Louis City just joined them, and it's not, this isn't, it's a big organization that's been doing well for many years. I was always, when I first heard about it, kinda like, I'm not really comfortable taking any risk with municipal funds, but I met with these people yesterday, I've got their information, the Missouri Municipal League is endorsing them, I, I think it's worth considering, you just, you become a member, and then you give them as much or as little as you want to, and they've got a program where they manage, you know, you, it's like a buyer's card, you know, you get a MasterCard, and it's cash back, so, you, you know, one city's buying all their rock with a MasterCard, getting a rebate on it.
I'm kinda, I'm kinda somewhat concerned if, if they're gonna offer 45%, say, okay, well, somewhere around there, okay, all right. And somebody else is offering a 30%, how, how can they offer that much more money than what a bank or someone else can?
Well, they're not offering, they're not guaranteeing anything. Well, they're not offering, they're not guaranteeing anything.
Okay.
They're saying, you know, over any given period of time, these are the returns that we realize. If you ask them to buy a CD, you're not gonna, you're only gonna do marginally better than if you buy the CD yourself. So you're buying a share, and it's kind of investment, cool. And if interest rates go up, you know, and value goes down, it's just, you don't know what it's gonna be. Except historically, it's been a lot higher than what we've been able to get on CDs. So if you think this is kind of a concept that you'd like to hear more about, they have a representative, we'll come down, we'll have a work session, and we can ask them all the questions that we need to ask to see if it's something you want to pursue further.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear more about it.
Okay, then I'll set it up. We'd asked for the insurance company to provide a more detailed report on their decision relative to Sandy Wyler, they did that. Unfortunately, it was like, just kind of a restatement of what we already knew. It basically said, we've investigated it, we can't find any negligence on the part of the city, and absent negligence, then insurance is not going to pay the claim. And I've advised Wyler. We talked about Fourth Street. You're aware that there's been a committee working on reviewing the landmark ordinance? It's been having a long process, it was interrupted a bit by personnel shortages. Petrie came in, it was one of the many things that was on her plate to pay attention to. She got it done. And the committee met today and, basically, with some reservations, but endorsed the work and has recommended that we pass it on to the Board of Aldermen. She will have that in your hands as early as tomorrow, but certainly about first part of next week. I'd like for you to take a look at it. And then we need to schedule a work session, probably not before a regular meeting. Because I think this is gonna be a work session where interested parties will want to attend and be heard, and it will probably maybe take longer than an hour.
How about next Thursday? Thursday in between meetings? Can we do something on that day?
I can't be there.
The 30th, I can't do that.
We've got two in between.
We've got two in between.
Yeah, you have two weeks in between.
And I had to arrange for copying and all that and made available to the public, so I don't know how long that will, because of the color.
November 6th. First Thursday.
The 6th?
6th, the 6th. Is everybody looking?
I'm in the uni band, and we have our first rehearsal. The uni band has their first rehearsal that day, I'm in that. 7 to 9. And I could miss it, but that means I'm gonna miss the first two.
Can we do it earlier?
Why don't we do it on a Wednesday night?
Can we do it on a different night of the week?
Wednesday's no good, I've already.
What about Monday?
Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday to 4th, that's good.
Election Day, can we do that day? But. Or what about the 3rd?
3rd'd be good.
Can we meet down at the restaurant where you could fix this?
What day is it?
3rd is Monday.
We don't have anything for planning and zoning, as far as I'm aware right now.
Right, Monday to 3rd.
Monday to 3rd.
What time?
You guys okay with the 3rd?
6 p.m.
John?
What time? 6.
6, here.
It's changing a lot, so it, I mean, from where it is now, so there's a lot explaining.
Okay, and just a reminder for all listening and anyone present who'd be interested, the solid waste cleanup that wholesome sponsors of the recycling center is Saturday from 8 a.m. to noon.
This Saturday?
This Saturday. Roll here today.
Slash recycling, yeah.
Is there grants available right now for sidewalks?
There is a grant available for, grant round available for sidewalks, yes sir.
Can we apply for Market Street?
Market, from where to where?
I guess that'd be from ninth on out, at least Blaine.
Blaine to Blaine.
A lot of kids have walked through there every day.
There are no sidewalks there right now, is that correct?
It ends at 9th.
It ends at 9th, and then there's nothing up the rest of Market Street. I think I've tried to walk that before and didn't feel too comfortable about that.
A lot of kids up through there, I've seen that with the Bloomsdale appliance.
Nothing from Sonny Cox is too that dead end, there's no sidewalk there, no? I've had a couple ladies that live up there say the same thing, well, we got sidewalks everywhere else, but we only have to put them on the one side of the, because, you know, the street's pretty narrow, and by the time you.
Grants have a limited, you have to do them piece at a time, because there's a limited dollar now available on any given cycle, so.
Anything else, any question? Okay, thank you. Staff reports, Eric?
Well, I guess, let's stop a minute. Those are due on November the 15th, I think, so we'll have a meeting between now and then so we can get the authority to apply, so I'll get it written in there. Otherwise, I may have to ask you to come to the special league to authorize that.
Still do that.
Good evening. Good evening.
How are you guys?
I don't have much to report. The burglary was, has already been released to the paper. We were able to get a lot of our stuff back and got charges on the people that we believe to be responsible for that. We did have one of our Impalas go down with a radiator issue that's being fixed now. And the Cops of Cook benefit was successful. I know the Reading Express is very appreciative of that, so it's a fun time. Does anybody have any questions?
Would you release that to the press, I guess, as far as, because I thought I listened today, and Don had that it got stolen, but I don't know that he had that it got recovered.
Oh, really?
Unless I heard.
It was Monday, but I got.
It was Monday, I actually, I don't think I sent it to Don, I dropped the ball on that. I will, I'll make sure he gets a copy of the release also.
It was in error.
I typically try to give it to both the sources.
I think it was on sometimesdude.com, too. Yeah, you know what it feels like to be left in the dirt.
I mean, I, no, I do it, but, okay.
Eric, are there any ordinance on the roadblocks? Nonprofit organizations only? Could you check into that for me? Or is that some Pan Bass?
It is our policy to limit it to established community nonprofit corporations.
Okay. Had a group of people said, man, we got roadblocks every other week there.
We do.
Started out with the Hoppies and the Tootsie Rolls, and now they, I can have one, or, you know.
We've discussed that, and having come up with a way to limit it.
How do you eliminate, just like, your benefits?
Doesn't bother me, go through it, if you don't give money, don't give it, just go through.
I mean, it is somewhat of a safety concern with people standing out in the middle of the road, but again, something that's gone on for many years. And again, how do you eliminate it, the charities that depend on that?
As long as it's nonprofit, you know.
That is our policy on it.
Anything else for Eric? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening. I just seen the report, MetroAg finished their removal of the bio solids in the land application last month. 450,000 gallons of bio solid were hauled out from the wastewater plant. Hydrant flushing is still going on this week, and we are on schedule to be completed tomorrow. Another thing, I did meet with, or did speak with Cochrane Engineering, and they plan to have a survey crew down later part of next week, start surveying out the areas and the properties where the new water lines could go.
So we have a hydrant break up in the Triangle area.
Yes.
They shut down the water line and fixed, and there was a boil advisory that attends any time the line breaks. What is our notification procedure?
Notification on a boil advisory? We contact the radio station, we contact channel 98. We also have Carla Bullock put it on Facebook and Twitter. And then even in small areas, as it was, hand-delivered notifications are delivered to each customer in the area.
But, kind of what, what's the coverage area? How far up or down do you go from the break?
The affected area, the affected area is what's shut down.
Do you, you always do that, though, unless it's a big area?
Yes.
You hand-deliver something in a smaller, I mean, if it's just 50 houses, or?
50 houses, you know.
That's a big, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's starting to get to be a lot.
But usually you don't ever shut off that many?
No. If we do, we wouldn't hand-deliver, you know, it would be public notification.
But this was like late at night when you finally got it back together again, wasn't it?
Yes. Yeah, the customers in that area were notified with all of those. Even the restaurant, the St. Genevieve Restaurant that's out there. I contacted her back at about 1 o'clock in the morning, and she came back out and turned all her appliances back on. And she was, you know, that was her request.
How, how many gallons Steve has left in the, we've got the little holding tank right now, we've got the big one, as far as the sewer.
Yeah, the bio solids?
Yeah.
There is, well, it's clear water that's on the bottom now. All the solids were removed on the big tank, there's nothing in the small tank at this time.
We're good to go for the.
Yeah, yeah, we.
You say there's just water in the big one?
Yeah, you have to build up solids on the bottom to raise the clear water to the top, so it can be decanted off.
Okay. So there's no, so you're saying there's just clear water in there, so there's basically nothing in there?
Right.
Okay. First time it's been empty in a long time, isn't it?
No, we try to, I mean, pretty close to empty every year, twice a year.
Is there gonna be any more manholes that are strong till?
They're on schedule for next week, there'll be three more. Yes, we inspect manholes weekly.
Anything else? Steve? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
We have Mick's reports there, just waiting for you. You can see where we've gained a couple more farming, we're still in need of several more. I think we gained four totals just recently? Or six?
I mean, four.
We need six more.
Still need six. Was there a bunch of them that quit or something? Was before, we were getting notification that they needed two or three volunteers? And all of a sudden now, there's like, ten vacancies?
I don't know what.
Why do you have six vacancies?
Yeah, still need six more, so.
Wouldn't this be something that Mick would maybe come here and talk about, or?
Well, he might be due pretty soon.
For his quarterly visit. Pam was checking on that.
We talked about it before there, anybody knew anybody that was interested that they were charred. Well, that was only like a couple. Yeah, yeah. And this ISO rating, if we do go with an upgraded truck, does that stay at four or still at five? Because Mick would have to answer that, I guess.
Well, absolutely, this is assuming that there's gonna be no change. Should we have a proposal to send to them, I guess they would consider holding off until we can implement it.
Okay, Tanner?
Good evening, everyone. I have, shame my friend Carl is not here today, because I'm gonna be short and sweet tonight. You have in front of you just kind of a summary of some of the high points. In the month of September, we had 1,973 guests through the Welcome Center. That was about 5% up over last year. September, as you can see from the chart, is always a pretty strong month for us. August is huge because of Girdefutt, and October is even better, but we're, so far, we're pulling a really strong October as well. In September, we sold a total of 340 passports through the passport program, and that'll be coming to a close soon for the winter months, so we're still going strong on that. Just kind of an update on the groups, this is the beginning of, September marks the beginning of kind of a strong season in groups. We had six adult tour groups during the month of September, several family reunions, class reunions, one elementary and one high school. September is usually a little bit early for them to be starting those field trips. This month, however, we've had field trips almost every day, and then on the rainy days, some of them canceled and rescheduled, so we ended up with two and three on some of our nice sunny days. But we're always glad to see them. I recently returned from the Missouri Division of Tourism's conference. It was held in St. Louis this year, and so it was easy to get to. I went up to it one day, and I took Megan Hook in my office the second day. We had a nice chance to learn, you always learn new information at those types of events, and also to network with other people and see what's working for them, and kind of compare notes, it's always good. And building relationships with the staff from the Missouri Division of Tourism is always beneficial to us. Next week, I'm going to St. Louis, to the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Commission, of which we are a member as an outlying area. And the focus of the presentation next week, they've invited all of the day trip locations from around St. Louis, like us, Hannibal, Kimswick, St. Charles, to come in and make a presentation about day trips from St. Louis. So I'm very excited about that and looking forward to making some good contacts there. I attached, since it was the end of the fiscal year, I know you're all intimately familiar with the budget process, but there's just a few key line items that we try to keep an eye on. So I attached that report since it was the end of the fiscal year, and you can kind of see how things fluctuate throughout the year on certain, you know, expense categories and revenue categories as well. And this has a few directly under the Welcome Center budget, and then also pulls in a few data pieces from the Tourism Tax Commission onto one sheet. So I think it's kind of a handy barometer, if you will. And then I just wanted to touch on some upcoming events. As someone mentioned earlier, it is Rural Heritage Day this weekend. I hope everyone's planning on getting out and supporting that event. It is coordinated by the St. Genevieve Lions Club. It's largely, well, it is a volunteer effort, and it's largely at no charge, so they appreciate a donation. So we're trying to get the best attendance that we can, of course, and surpassing last year. We hope that that will be the case, and it looks like we're gonna have beautiful weather, so we're really excited about that. That goes 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Saturday. And then that evening, you have the deja vu spirit reunion. That's a fundraiser for Memorial. That's a fundraiser for Memorial Cemetery and helps with, um, the cost for, um, maintenance improvements in the cemetery. Uh, that runs five thirty to eight P M. in the evening, and it's always a very interesting and entertaining event. Um, next week, on October twenty-ninth, is a fundraising event for the Saint Genevieve Downtown Renewal Project. It's, uh, one of those opportunities to drink wine and create fine art by your own hand. So, if you're interested in having something hang on your wall at home that you've actually created, and maybe under the influence of some adult beverages, that could be a good opportunity for you. Um, that's on October twenty-ninth. Then we have, um, a couple of big dates coming up in November, I want to be sure that everyone's familiar with, of course. Um, you know, we have these, um, posted out in City Hall and down at the Welcome Center and at all the businesses, um, and wineries in the area. Um, one of our big events is coming up, this is on the Route de Vin, it's November fifteenth and sixteenth, that is the Wine Diva Weekend. The next one is the Cookie Crumb Trail on November twenty-second. Um, that's a chance to really kick off the holiday shopping season and, um, experience some great cooks downtown who will make, um, some great cookies, and then if you like it, you can take home the recipe, so that's the idea there. The proceeds for that go to a local needy family, and last year we were able to provide over five hundred dollars to a local needy family. We're hoping to be able to help two families this year, so we're trying to get lots more people to the Cookie Crumb Trail. Um, and then, of course, the big, big event this quarter is the Holiday Christmas Festival on December sixth and seventh. It starts out the night before with a variety show up at the Performing Arts Center at Saint Jen, and then, as you know, the, um, Santa Claus Parade and all the live music and all the venues downtown. Again, we're hoping for better weather this year, so that we won't have to cancel everything and reschedule it, but, um, that's my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Meeting's our rest lately, I've been meeting with all the event committees and Teddy's on several of those, so, alright, thank you.
Thank you. David?
Good evening again. Well, hi, Kenny, been seeing you a while. If you look on my report, we, uh, we spent some time hauling some sand and dirt mixture, uh, for the ball fields, and also we dug out the rest of the concrete for the swimming pool. Kind of did that, uh, at the end of last year's budget, because we didn't, we was out of money, so we figured that didn't cost us anything, but a little bit of fuel and, and the labor, so. And Beth, we got, uh, Bill Moore done for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I explained to him that we was waiting to get more money, so he understood.
I told him that, too, so hopefully, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And, uh, I guess we'll wait to hear from Sandra, what's gonna go on about tomorrow for the Rural Heritage, because I haven't really heard much of what, what we're expected to do, so.
So, on the drain on North Main Street, is Felix gonna be able to get the backhoe back there anytime, you know?
I thought the way he talked, they was probably gonna be done today. The workers were gonna be done, so. Because he only said they had a couple more days, or tomorrow, they, they should be done, so. But, uh, the other drain on the other end, I contacted, uh, can't think of the guy's name right now, from Burlington Northern, and he's supposed to call me back, but, uh, they had a train derailment and he was up for I don't know how many hours, so he had to sleep through that, so he said, when he gets back to normal, he's gonna call me, because they filled in where we dug out, and I asked him if we could do it, and he, he said he didn't want us doing that. But I said, if that drain doesn't, if they don't open it, then that's why we had water on it last week. Even though we got the big one dug out.
Their equipment's still down there?
Their equipment, no, they're gone. But as long, I mean, the big one's dug out and it seems to be working, but that little one down the other end is, is clogged up again.
There's something not working up there.
So, the water, the, so why'd you have the backup? Because they filled it in?
Mm-hmm. Well, whenever they was doing all that work up there, they had their, uh, dozer up there and just filled it in, because somebody went up there once before and dug a big hole and that way it drained. But they filled the hole in.
So, we got retention bond there.
If you don't call me back tomorrow morning, I'm gonna call him and see what.
Yeah, we'll talk.
See what they can do, so.
Anything else for Dan?
Y'all, good evening.
Thanks, David.
Any other reports, any money? Okay, we're going to the minutes of October the ninth, regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one thing to change.
Okay.
They haven't done a being here, I was not here at the last meeting. I was in Canada. But I thought about you guys while I was down.
Mick, you went online and watched it, I'm sure.
I'm trying to put you on it, bud. Okay. So, we'll make the, we'll make the necessary changes, without him in there, yeah, okay. So, um, Mike, great, you made the motion?
Yes.
Revised that to, uh, amended?
Yeah, revised it to make the amendment that Mr. Ross was not here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Um, the Treasury Report for September?
That's year-end.
Okay.
That's why it's so thick.
Moved up, move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, at this time, um, let's see what little Tom says, uh.
Public hearing.
Seven thirty-nine, we will open a public hearing. Mayor and Board of Alderman and City of Saint Genevieve, Missouri, will hold a public hearing to consider requests from Saint Genevieve County Special Road District A for a special use permit to permit use and allow expansion of the storage facility at ten twenty-three North Main Street. Expansion is to allow additional road salt to be stored. Property is currently located in an R-one residential zone and has been operating as a non-conforming use. If anybody has any questions about that, Petrie is here. Anybody in the audience would need, want to talk to the board about that, since it is a public hearing? Okay, so much for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty. And if, um, somebody wants to make the motion to approve that at this point, since it's, it's what we're on.
Moved up.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Including the conditions, make sure we include the conditions if any.
They're in here, right? Yeah.
Motion to approve. Subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Does the motion have to include that, or?
Should.
Okay.
It may.
So, you're, um, you're saying, John, your motion would include the conditions?
Right.
Okay.
Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. It's still being seven forty, we will open the next public hearing. The Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Saint Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Shamet Incorporated for a special use permit that, that allows the property to be used for commercial and recreational purposes, including a former chicken coop as a hospitality center for wine tasting and sales, the historic Beckett-Rabel House as muse, as a museum, and the former barn as an open-air pavilion. Property is currently located in an R-two residential zone. Beckett-Rabel House was once a residence, but has been operating as a museum from time to time, a non-conforming use. The chicken coop and barn are currently accessory structures to the house. Any comments?
I think that's pretty neat, let's see how they're gonna pull that off. That's gonna be nice.
Yeah, it's.
That is going to be nice.
Anything else, yes, Teddy?
No, I was gonna make the motion.
Okay, well, being seven forty-two, let's close the hearing, and.
Second. I made the motion with the terms that, that we have.
Okay. Joe second that, right?
No.
I'm sorry, Don, it did. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, Old Business, Bill number thirty-nine ninety-six, second reading.
An ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the City of Saint Genevieve, Missouri, to be held April seventh, two thousand fifteen, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Richard Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Six, yes, zero nos, two absent, Bill number thirty-nine ninety-six now becomes ordinance thirty-nine thirty-five.
Okay, thank you. Not being under New Business, any public comments, anyone? Anybody? Okay, any other business? Sir?
Do we need to extend the burning?
Yeah, somebody called me last week, as a matter of fact, will we, what will we, uh?
We purchased it for a month.
Okay. So, you wanna go till end of November, first of the year?
Let's go first of the year.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
We'll go to January first, then. Anything else?
We have to go into closed session to discuss real estate.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Motion carries.